Oh, for a lot. Well, it was meant to be.
Oh, that's one of their cards.
That's orange.
Heather, your pen?
Is it? I wondered if I sent my pen around. I just grabbed another one.
We'll call this meeting order.
Ten o'clock, so start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the call.
I'll do all of this.
Yeah.
And this, before we go to the agenda, maybe you should tell me to this one. So that she can actually before the roll.
Okay. You want to do it right now then?
I'll do the board call.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors will meet at 10:00 a.m. on November 10th, 2022, in the county board room. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on November 4th, 2022, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, County Clerk.
At this time, I'd like to jump out of order already, just to get the job done. And before we actually do road call, uh, roll call and adopt the agenda, I would like to do number five. Appoint District 11 County Board Supervisor. And as our committee, we chose Dawn Waldera. And Dawn would like to say a few words, just push the button on your mic there, or you can come up here if you want.
Yes, thanks for, uh, thanks for having me. I'm Dawn Waldera. I have lived in Tremplow County for almost all of my life, most of that in the township of Preston, but most recently now living in Independence. Passionate about Tremplow County and its being a wonderful place to live, grow and play. Looking forward to being a part of making things better and/or just being a part of operationalizing what needs to be done for Tremplow County.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
So basically, I have to have approval from the board for my appointment?
Do we need a motion? I make a motion to approve Dawn Waldera.
Second.
Most mid second, and second by, how do you want it? Oh, by Dan Schreiner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous.
Now you get to stand up though. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dawn Waldera.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the Office of County Board Supervisor, District 11.
Of the Office of the County Board Supervisor, District 11.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. So you can sign that one if you wanted.
Now you can put your name tag up to it.
It's under your microphone.
Perfect, temporary.
We'll get a real one.
Okay, now we can go to roll call.
Bridget Turner.
Here.
Stacy Klein.
Here.
Richard Sasha.
Here.
Lori Severson. I think she's stuck in the hurricane.
Oh, is she in Florida?
Her flight got canceled. Andy Todd.
Here.
Heather Fritsch.
Here.
Kevin Adams.
Here.
Dick Miller.
Here.
David Orsh.
Here.
John Austin.
Here. You didn't call, you didn't call Dawn.
She's, she's next, you're 10, she's 11.
Oh, okay. Okay. Here.
Dawn Waldera.
Here.
Robert Becker.
Present.
Dan Schreiner.
Here.
Kellen Nelson.
Here.
David Larson.
Here.
Jeannie Nutter.
Here.
Ron Johnson. Yes. Okay. Sixteen and one.
Okay. Certified open meeting law requirements been met with posting a notification. We have an eleven item agenda, looking for approval of the agenda. Opposed by Ms. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Johnson.
Turner.
Oh, Ms. Turner? What did I say?
He looked that way.
I looked at you. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's Carrie. Looking for approval of the minutes from the October meeting.
Move to approve.
Opposed by Ms. Nutter, I should have said Ms. Turner, just for fair play.
Andy Todd, I was one over here, yeah, Sasha.
And seconded by Doc Sasha. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Carrie. Appearances, we now have librarian.
Nope.
Yeah, we do.
No.
We did.
That's your amended agenda.
I didn't get one. Oh. Oh, sorry, quarterly updates. Mr. Sasha.
All right, thank you, Mr. Austin, I appreciate it.
I gotta use yours, I guess.
Thanks, everyone. I, I thought that maybe librarian was going to be an added, one of my duties in the months ahead, you know, hey. It could be worse. All right, I'm gonna pass around year end numbers. Those, those year end numbers are, are a little difficult to interpret. We just, they were kind of a quick and dirty preparation for, for the meeting today, just to kind of give you an idea as what our numbers are at year end relative to, to prior years. Just kind of as a quick overview, CF means criminal felony, so that's a, that's a case that has at least one felony charged within it. CM is criminal misdemeanor, so that's a case that has at least one misdemeanor charged in it. Those number, or those numbers are mutually exclusive, so the cases aren't being double counted. So if it's a felony case and it has misdemeanors in it, it's considered a felony case. If it's a misdemeanor case and there are forfeitures involved, it's considered a misdemeanor case and so on. Criminal traffic is impaired driving related offenses, operating after revocation offenses. FOs are forfeitures, so tickets, such as dogs running at large, things of that nature. Traffic is noncriminal traffic, like speeding tickets. JV is delinquencies and JC's are children in need of protection and services cases. Totalling these numbers up for 2022, and obviously we still have a month to go, we're, we're, we're at 688 cases for 2022 so far. That's, that number is consistent with many years prior, but they're down pretty markedly from 2021, which, which is a good thing. 2021 was a, was a, was an anomaly. There, there were nearly a thousand cases filed of various types, or a thousand cases handled by my office of various types in 2021. Over 100 additional felonies in 2021 relative to the, any year prior, kind of on, on record. And, and as, as I discussed last year, I think that, that part of the reason for the spike in 2021 was kind of the fallout of COVID in terms of all these support services, such as probation and mental health programming and community resources effectively shutting down for a substantial period of time and kind of letting people, leaving people to their own devices. And, and for people who, who need structure and support and don't get structure and support, that often resulted in people turning to drugs, turning to, you know, alcohol, engaging in criminal activity because no one's kind of keeping a close eye on them. Fortunately, I think in 2022, DOC, Department of Corrections is kind of back, taking a more active role in supervising their caseload. I think we're seeing less kind of unchecked mental health, unchecked drug addiction. I, I think that it's, we're kind of starting to get a handle on it relative to, to last year. So, so that's good news. You know, historically, I've been coming down here and saying year after year, this is the worst year on record. This, this year, I'm not saying that. We're, we're, we're on a, on a better course and hopefully that continues. So we're, we're doing everything that we can to sort of keep, keep cases moving and, and holding people accountable in the county. Although it might look like 2022 is, is, you know, considerably more relaxed than 2021. In fact, what these numbers mean is that right about now, we have a, a large number of trials on that were, for, for cases that were filed in 2021 that are just kind of getting to, getting to trial now in 2022. So for the next, we had a week long trial a couple of weeks ago. We, we have, I think, four or five trials on until the end of the year. So, so my office is really busy for the rest of the year and into 2023 from kind of a trial standpoint. But hopefully, when I talk to you guys in 2023, November 2023, things will calm down a little bit and we'll be able to smooth, smoothly sail to the end of 2023. We'll see. In terms of what's going on with my office, Wayne Apichka, my diversion coordinator, who's worked with the county for, for many decades in a human services context and then has been my diversion coordinator for quite some time, is going to retire. So, so soon we'll be kind of posting his position. We've, we've applied for a grant for treatment assisted diversion through, through the state that will hopefully offset some of the expenses of maintaining a diversion program for the county. So, so you guys are aware, there's, there's a plan to continue that diversion program. It's doing a tremendous amount of good for this county in a variety of aspects. I don't want to take up too much time, but, but there's, there's kind of a lot to explain in terms of what diversion means and what it looks like. It's not just a touchy feely way of, of managing cases, not just for first time offenders. It's also for, for persons who, who need some extra accountability even beyond what probation is offering. So just to let you, to kind of tell you what that means quickly, sometimes we'll, we'll divert a count or put a person on a diversion agreement for a particular criminal offense, but also put them on probation and have as a condition of their diversion agreement that they comply with every term of probation. If they don't do that, there's the opportunity for additional accountability for that offender by bringing them back into court on that diverted count, revoking that agreement and then sentencing, sentencing that person on, on that diverted count. So, so diversion, there's a lot of utility. It, it also allows for first time offenders, young offenders, people who are kind of taking an active role in managing their, their life affairs to avoid a criminal conviction. That's, that's one very important component of diversion, but the, the other component, the accountability component is, is another kind of edge to that sword. Those are, those are kind of the major things that are happening with, with my office these days. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to, to address those now. Yeah, Kevin.
It seems like the diversion program works well, especially for first time offenders or someone that might be young or a young adult. So you don't, for when you did something when you're young and down, or, you know, your brain's not fully developed, that they don't have a criminal record their whole life because of something they did when they were a kid, basically. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's, that's one, that's kind of one edge to the sword and it, and it's, and it's a very, it's a, it's a very important one. You know, everyone's been 18, 19 years old and, and made decisions that, that probably could have ended up with, with them, you know, getting charges referred. And, and, you know, many people kind of don't, don't have that brush with the law and, and they grow up, they move on, they, they learn and mature. You know, we want to give people an opportunity to, to put their lives on a, on a better path, especially young people. Yeah, Mrs. Nutter.
I, I'm just happy to see how CHIPS cases and juvenile justice cases are on the decline, especially CHIPS cases when you look at 2018. There's 67 and now we're down to 20. And I think your office and the Department of Human Services have implemented lots of really strong programs to support families and kids. And, and this is amazing, and especially the JV cases from 43 to 20. I mean, kudos to both departments for working really hard to support our families and kids.
Yeah, it's, I, I know that, that there have been a number of efforts kind of put in place to informally manage, manage persons who, who might have otherwise been subject to a, a petition filing years ago. Yeah, I, I think, I think that's, that's a, that's a good thing. I, I don't think that we can say necessarily that, that there's less of a need for those services. But, um, yeah, if, if we can meet, if we can meet the community's needs without formal involvement, great. You know, I, obviously it's something that we need to monitor carefully to, to ensure that those needs are being met. But, but yeah, it's, we're definitely, our, our numbers are, are down considerably from 2018, 2017.
Well, and especially in out of home care placements, which is 100% levy dollars. You know, I know out of home care skyrocketed at one time and we're, y'all are working really hard to manage that.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that.
Thanks. Yes, Ms. Waldera.
At the risk of being presumptuous, I don't really have a lot to add at this point, I'm too new. But I am curious, numbers are numbers. We have a 30% decrease in the cases presented this year so far. Is there any potential that that decrease has anything to do with staffing shortages or the ability to be out and about as much as we were in 21?
It's a good question. I, from my perspective, I'm not, I haven't changed kind of my prosecutorial policy in terms of, of managing cases that, that kind of come before me. That is to say, I'm not saying, I'm not opting not to charge a person simply because of, of caseload. My, my ADA and I are kind of gritting our teeth and just dealing with it and we kind of have been since, since 2021. You know, I, I know the law enforcement's out there working, working and, you know, working hard on a nightly basis. I don't, I don't think they're taking much of a different tack. I, you know, I, and I haven't had time to sit down and kind of look at the numbers and kind of look at, you know, how many, how many of those cases are driven by, you know, single offenders? You know, sometimes that, that's an issue. I, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know if staffing is, is driving that decrease. My, my gut tells me that that's not the issue here, although staffing is of course a perennial problem and it's, and more, more acute than ever, especially for law enforcement agencies. Actually, you know, I, I know that municipalities have been struggling to, to fill vacancies. And, and I suspect that probably if I look at municipal referrals, they're down relative to what they were a few years ago, simply because.
Of the manpower. Yeah, I don't mean to suggest that people aren't doing their job, but when you have limited manpower, you have the limited ability.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's, it's a good point. And, and from, from my perspective, you know, I, obviously I pay attention to which department's sending me a referral, but, but it, it doesn't matter to me at the end of the day, like the offense is the offense. And so, but, but I, I suspect that, that some of these municipalities who, who are, are having acute challenges filling, filling shifts have had their numbers drop accordingly. So yeah, it's, it's a good point.
I was just gonna say. I know our human services had implemented some really good programs in the last year that have helped cut down a lot of these. Their goal was to try to keep kids with their families and they implemented different controls and safety measures for that to try and bring less trauma to the kids, but also give them a safe environment and support the families. So that's, that made a big drop in it too.
Yeah, and, and yeah, just, I, I'd echo Heather's comment, but yeah, I, I was talking about from the law enforcement standpoint and just the criminal, the criminal, the criminal case drivers. Yes.
Well, and I think, I think we do have some really excellent programs in Tremplow County, like the drug court and other ways to deal with situations, so we aren't just always locking people up. And I, I think we do a really good job of trying to take care of the people that live in Tremplow County and support parents, because if we can't support parents, their kids are gonna end up in out of home care. So I think, I think we've done, done a really good job in, like, human services has got some amazing grants in the past year to provide these kind of alternative supportive things. Kudos to the Sheriff's Department and everybody that works in Tremplow County. It's been a tough three years and people have really, really worked hard under tough situations.
I, I would agree and I, I think that Tremplow County really punches above its weight for services offered to community members and, and kind of the caliber of, of system actors in this county. I think, I think Tremplow County is, is a really, you know, for a small county, we're doing, doing a lot with the limited resources and limited staffing that we have, so.
We just need that mobile crisis unit.
Oh boy, there's, there's a lot, there, there's a lot we need. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, have a good day, take care. And, and as always, I always like to conclude these by saying, I'm happy to talk about criminal justice matters or things that are going on in my office with anybody at any time. Any of you, I would, I would encourage each and every one of you to stop by or give me a call and talk about what's going on or what your concerns are. I really welcome that. If anyone's watching this at home, give my office a call. Like I've, I, I've called, I've talked to five people in the community this week who've had questions about pending cases that, you know, people in the community have been involved in. And so I'm always happy to talk with people about cases, you know, confidentiality considered. But I'm happy to talk about things generally or specifically. Please stop in and say, say hello. Yeah, Jeannie.
You respond to emails very quickly.
Thank you, I, I try to do it, I, I try to stay on top of it. I get a lot, but I try, so thank you guys.
Good morning. So this is the time that I present to you with what some may think are boring numbers or others think are very interesting numbers. For all the, for the one new board member here today, I guess the others have seen this before. So for you, I'm, I'm Brett Summex, I'm the sheriff here in the county and congratulations on your appointment to the county board. So this, this is for the quarter starting August 1st and ending October 31st. And I have the numbers for those compared to the previous quarter here. So total calls for service for the Tremplow County Sheriff's Office in this quarter was 3,240. Calls for service are, are anything we do. It can be for responding to crashes or domestics or anything crime related, to serving papers, traffic stops. It's a record of every single thing we do. So in that quarter, we had 3240 compared to 3,410 the previous quarter. That number does not include the calls that my dispatch center takes for all the municipalities in the community. And that just dawned on me when I was sitting there and I think that might be a number that this body might be interested in hearing as well, how many calls for service actually come through our communication center. Some of the more, the more high end things we deal with, death investigation for one thing. In that quarter, we had nine death investigations. And death investigations can be natural deaths or they can be, they can be suspicious deaths or they could be overdose deaths. We called, we responded to nine of those compared to eight from the previous quarter. Drug abuse violations held steady and we had 40, 40 this quarter compared to 40 last quarter. Those are not all arrests or charges. Those are anything to do with drugs that comes into our call center. And, and it could be even a detective taking out a number to investigate a, a drug complaint that resulted from a traffic stop. So basically, it's the number of new drug cases we started in the county. Simple assaults, these are what you refer to as disorderly conduct. Some of them are just yelling, others might be pushing each other around. We responded to 23 in this quarter compared to 32 in the quarter before. Burglaries are down substantially. We responded to three compared to 12 the quarter before. Thefts are up a little, eight versus five. And motor vehicle thefts again are up a little bit. We took four of those complaints versus two in the quarter before. Some traffic data that we, we respond or collect here, we responded to 193 total crashes in that quarter compared to 251 in the quarter before. I, I'd have no explanation as to why they're down, but the simple fact of the matter is that there were that many less called into the sheriff's office. Of those, 117 were deer crashes that were called into the sheriff's office. And, and I would say that probably 60% of the deer crashes in the county get called into us. So there, there's, that, that number is much higher, but that's the, that's the number that's reported to us. We don't respond to those unless there's road blockage or injury. We direct the driver to fill out a report online now. And I guess if they need a ride or a tow truck and specifically need us to respond, we will. But it's not a real time consuming thing for law enforcement anymore because of technology. We responded to 48 property damage crashes. That was the same as the quarter before. We had 18 injury crashes in that quarter compared to 16 and no fatalities. And we have zero fatalities to date. I know what happened the last time we said that and we got into December and that did not last. So keep a, keep your fingers crossed. Some enforcement numbers, we wrote 126 citations compared to 153 the quarter before. 14 non-traffic citations, so we have ordinances that adopt state statutes for theft or disorderly conduct, stuff like that. And instead of making a criminal referral to a court, we can issue a non-traffic referral to the court and it does not become a part of their criminal record. We issued 14 of those and 288 warnings compared to 328 in the quarter before. We responded to 20 mental health incidents. They are not all chapter 51 incidents, but nonetheless, they are mental health incidents compared to 24 in the quarter before. Some jail statistics, the numbers are up today. We have 35 in our custody today. This time for, three months ago, we were at 26. Four of them are out of county in contracted county space versus three a quarter ago. We have five on electronic monitoring versus three a quarter ago. Three of them, we are monitoring electronically for jails outside of our county. And that's not uncommon. A person is convicted in another county, lives or works in our county and they'll, they'll reach out to us to, to get onto our electronic monitoring program. It's a revenue source for us, it pays for the expenses, it does not cost this county anything to do it and it gives the person the availability to keep their job or daycare or whatever it might be. They have to qualify for that, we don't just let everybody own on electronic monitoring. But again, we have five of them versus three. And then we have one in another jail that is actually sitting time for us, but they're also sitting time in another jail. It's like concurrent sentences, it's not costing us anything, it's just counting as, as an inmate of ours, so. Some staffing numbers, funny you should bring that up. I am one of very, very few counties in Wisconsin right now that are fully staffed. And some of those counties are significantly understaffed right now. So I feel very fortunate that we are at a place where we're at. Just yesterday, I offered a, a job to a person for a dispatch. That was the last vacant position we have that I can fill right now. In the traffic division, I do have one opening, but that one will be filled shortly. That had to result from promoting to a traffic sergeant position, which took place last week. Now the trickle down effect will happen and we'll fill that. So, so I, I'm happy to report we are fully staffed. When they start talking about lower referrals to the district attorney's office and whether or not it's staffing, I will say that we have three municipalities in our county right now that are struggling. And when I say struggling, that, it doesn't do justice. They are really struggling to fill open positions. One of them has two, another one has one, soon to be two, and a, a third one has one open. However, I've heard they've got somebody in, in training right now. All three of them are, are bigger cities in the county that have a number of calls and the sheriff's office has picked up the slack there. We've been able to do it, but it's, you know, it results in some lower response times to those municipalities. So we do the best we can, but it, but it affects the referrals if they, if they don't have their officers to investigate and, and we don't necessarily. It'll come to the law enforcement committee in December and hopefully to the full county board in December, the terms of that contract, and, and it's perhaps something that we can make work with all other municipalities if they're in similar situations, so. Vehicles, I, I've got, six of my fleet are on Wisconsin Surplus Auction site right now for sale. That auction closes tomorrow. It resulted in replacing four detective vehicles, or excuse me, three detective vehicles, one patrol vehicle, a transport van, and then my squad car. All four, all six of those were replaced, and the, those that are replaced are on the site. It seems to be going very well. I'm, I'm hoping that I continue the success I've had in, in the last two years of selling vehicles versus trading them, and it's really been able to help us keep up with increasing costs without coming to the board for more money. So we'll watch that and see how that goes. Another thing that this board will be hearing in December is the sheriff's office and every municipal police department in the county received a, at the, at first it was referred to as a technology grant, and the sheriff's office received a $38,000 grant and is going to be applying to replace all of our hotspots, they're called, in, in squad cars. And what that is, is that's, that's the device that the computer uses to connect to the web. Those that we have now are old, old technology, and, and they, they didn't perform as well as we had hoped. However, it's much better than what we had before, which was almost nothing. So, but this grant is going to allow us to upgrade all of those. It's a reimbursement grant, so we have to spend the money first. The resolutions have been passed at both committees. It'll be coming to the county board. I was thinking this one, but, but it's not on the agenda, so I assume it'll be the December county board meeting you'll be getting at, the technology grant and then the opioid grant as well. So another grant that you'll be, that the committees have approved that you will be seeing in, in December is, is our request for nearly $10,000 of the opioid settlement fund to increase our mental health onsite, mental health physicians in our jail. We, we have six right now, six hours per week, and we are going to go to eight hours per week. We work closely with our, our medical provider upstairs, up in the jail, Corporation Council, and, and we made the determination that this qualifies as a useful spending of the opioid money, because it's no secret that drug addiction goes hand-in-hand with mental health or deteriorating mental health, so we look forward to that. The budget that you are considering today has that in, that, that $10,000 in my budget. If the resolution is passed, that'll come off of my budget or it'll be returned, however it works out, I guess. So a couple of exciting pieces that, financially anyway, for the facility, so. In a nutshell, that's, that's the going-ons of the sheriff's office in the quarter. In August, it was a busy month for us. We had Ashley for the Arts where there was nearly 40,000 people on either Friday or Saturday in the city of Arcadia, traveling through our county with very few incidents. County Fair brings a number of people into the county. We had, you know, I would say no incidents related to the county fair, so we made it through a tough quarter pretty well.
Do you do apple fair too?
Uh, we used to. They don't, they don't ask us for that anymore, but we used to sign a deputy for the day for apple fair. It was, they had, they'd have the bike ride and maybe a tractor ride, and, and the deputy was assigned just to that area on an overtime basis, but that is, that request has not been made of us for, since before I was sheriff, actually. So with that, just as, as District Attorney Sasha mentioned, especially for the new members, if there's a, if you know the quarterly report is coming and there's a certain topic or a certain number you want to hear, don't hesitate to reach out to me. I will gladly bring any statistic you would like to see to this, to this quarterly meeting, and I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions?
Um, number one, because I know when the rest of us got onto the board, you provided us like a folder for your, didn't you provide a folder with your, your business card and stuff?
Um, I, I, I more likely gave you the business card, the folder, I'm not sure.
Yeah, if you could give her, if you could give her like a business card too, being the new member, so she can have one for, just request the same way, because she's on. And also, do you think with our shaky economy that we have right now, that there might be, is there historically more thefts with the shaky economy, you think?
Thefts and burglaries go hand-in-hand with drug, drug addiction or drug use, and the high, the more drug incidents you are seeing in your county, the more thefts and burglaries you're going to see, because those folks, number one, likely aren't working, and number two, have to support their habit. So that's the, that's usually the, the tie between thefts and whatever the cause may be.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question but a comment. I just wanted to thank him because his officers were on patrol on election day and did stop in, in polling places just to make sure everything was going good, and I was happy for that, so thank you.
Just one other question. I'm hearing different areas around the state having major issues with catalytic converters being stolen. Is that happening in our county or is it other types of auto thefts?
So catalytic converters, that kind of a theft is, that's, that's a general theft. That's, that's recorded in those numbers. It's not recorded in motor vehicle thefts. So uniform crime reporting requires us that we separate the actual theft of a motor vehicle from all other thefts. So when I say theft of motor vehicle, that is the car itself, yeah, yep. But to answer your question, yes, we are not immune to catalytic converters. We've actually made a couple referrals for, for, to the DA's office for those thefts, but yet they continue. There's no real record-keeping requirements on salvage yards or the, the end users or end receivers of those products yet, so I wouldn't doubt you might see that at some point, some more requirements on, on the salvage yards to take, like pawn shops, you have to show a photo ID, and they have to keep the stuff, keep the records for a year, and that might be something you see in the future with catalytic converters, because it's very prominent and it's very expensive, so.
And is that still tied mainly to a drug issue?
No, that's, I think that's a financial issue, because they are worth so much money.
Sure.
Really? I pulled mine off with catalytic.
They're illegal to operate without a catalytic converter, John, so.
How much did you get for it?
I'm going to chill it in my barnyard, so if somebody wants to come and get it.
Yeah, yeah.
And now you can, I just saw someone where you can take one off a car.
In like two minutes. They're so good at it.
If you have the proper tools, you're not going to unbolt them and get them off, but you're going to do damage and get them off, and.
Park your car, I park my truck backwards into my garage.
Yeah, and it's, they're being stolen from parking ramps and what otherwise you might feel are secure buildings too. That's, that's a great point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Talk about enclosed session, you mean? Is that what you?
Definitely going to be more thefts now that they all know.
It's sad what people steal. Somebody cut down a Christmas tree from right in our backyard.
Oh, my.
Last year. I don't know how they could look at it during Christmas knowing they stole it.
Well, some people have very low consciences, consciousness, consciousness too, but conscious levels.
We had a fire in our backyard, we had gas on, so. We had to put catalots on all of them, it's sad, but yeah.
Have you heard anything coming down the pike in regard to some type of specific with junkyards receiving these? Has anybody at the state level or a level you've heard of talking about?
I have not heard anything.
You know, similar to, you know, the years ago aluminum and copper wire, now any place receiving that, you have to show an ID to.
Yep, and I, I don't know, it's something that maybe could be in place that I don't even know about now. I suspect that it's, that is going to be the rational move that's going to have to be made if it hasn't already. I have not heard that yet, though.
Brett, remind us, what does it cost to send these criminals to other jails that could be a saving, savings for us in the future when this jail gets started?
So it depends on the county. I have three different counties that contract with, that I contract with. It's Clark County, Pierce County, and, and Barron County. And each contract is, is different, written different, and therefore comes with different costs, but the range is about, is $45, $40 a month to $55 a month. A day.
A day. Wow, that's cheap.
A day per person. Yeah, a day per person, so, you know, the budget has $150,000 in it each year. It is not uncommon that in my first four years, I've had to come back for a little more. This year, luckily, we aren't going to have to come back for more, but it'll be the savings to the county just in the contracting alone of about $150,000 a year, plus there's transport costs that are associated with that and manpower as well.
Any other questions?
Welcome back to your job for the next four years.
Thank you. Yep, it was close until that first precinct came in, but, but I appreciate it. I thank everybody in the county for their support. I, you know, I, the, the numbers, I think, speak for the satisfaction level in the county, and I'm very happy to, to serve, to serve you and the county and look forward to four more years working with you.
And I, and I thank the county board and the personnel committee and the bargaining committee, who really work hard to pay our deputies and the people in the department what they're worth, and so that's our goal, is to keep people here.
And I thank you for that as well.
And not to have them train and then go to Eau Claire or La Crosse or whatever.
Yep.
He has little or no staffing issues is because we take care of his deputies in mind.
We try.
It's cumulative. It's a, it's a great county to work in, too. You know, we got a very supportive public, we got a very supportive county board, and it's, it's a cumulative effect of pay and conditions, both inside and outside.
Well, it reflects too that you must be good to work for, because if you were stressful to work for, you wouldn't be fully staffed, so I appreciate that.
I have been on that side of the fence, and it is. It's sometimes very stressful to work for, but again, until you've been on this side of the fence, you don't understand some of the things that go on either, and, you know, I'm, I'm not scared to try to bring understanding when I can, so.
Let's just get that mobile crisis unit. We have to work together.
I'm 100, 100% behind you on that one.
I know.
Yep, yep.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
No, I think my agenda's actually right. I have a librarian representative, Jessica Schoonover.
Yay, Jessica.
Thanks. I'm going to move this, because I'm a little bit smaller than everybody else so far. So my name is Jessica Schoonover. I am the library director at the Shirley Wright Memorial Library, which is a public library in Tremplow, and I am here to speak on behalf of all nine Tremplow County libraries regarding a resolution that is coming up soon for your vote. I do have notes, so, and I am going to use them, because otherwise I ramble, so I'll try to give you eye contact as much as I can as I go through this. But public libraries in Wisconsin are not federally or state-funded. We do not receive any operating revenue from the government or from the state of Wisconsin. Libraries are funded mainly in two ways: tax appropriation from the municipality in which they are located, and county reimbursement for circulated items to non-municipal residents. The resolution that you have before you today is regarding this reimbursement to Tremplow County libraries for actual usage by residents who don't live in a municipality with a library, and then therefore they don't pay a library tax. This resolution is the same as we presented over the past five years, asking the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors to reimburse your nine Tremplow County libraries at 100% for your taxpayers' library usage. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of the operating budget of one of your Tremplow County libraries, I'll talk about my library. My 2022 library budget's total revenue is $187,255. 51% of that revenue of my budget is from the Village of Tremplow taxpayers. 40% of my budget is from the Tremplow County reimbursement. 5% is from adjacent county reimbursement, and they reimburse us at 70%. And approximately 7% of my budget for revenue is things like when somebody loses an item, that replacement cost, fees for services like printing and faxing, and donations. I, like all the other libraries in the county, must make our budget revenue spread to keep our library open. In my case, 42 hours a week. We use that revenue to pair, pay fair and competitive wages to maintain a dedicated staff, which gets harder and harder each year, as you can imagine. We use that revenue to purchase our materials, to maintain our buildings, to establish literacy and programming offerings and so forth. When we first began petitioning the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors to increase this state-mandated reimbursement for non-resident library usage in Tremplow County from 70% to 100%, we use the analogy of a trip to Walmart. When you shop at Walmart, you would never attempt to give the cashier $7 for the $10 item you wanted to purchase. In the same way, services provided by your county libraries are the same for whoever walks through our door, whether it's somebody that lives in the municipality and pays a library tax or lives in the county and does not. These services have a cost, and Tremplow County should reimburse us fully for that cost. Each library in the Winding Rivers Library System keeps patron records that indicate the township and the county of every single user. This residency information has to be verified yearly by our patrons to keep their accounts active. Libraries are required to file an annual report each year through the Department of Instruction, where these numbers are used to calculate the county reimbursement. Libraries are reimbursed by the county for library services provided the previous year to these non-resident borrowers. So reimbursing us less than 100% for services already provided back in 2021 puts a big financial strain on this important community resource. And we are not alone in this thought, and I have approximately 15 letters of support that came to Paul that I can certainly pass around if you would like. Many taxpayers in Tremplow County support 100% reimbursement of your nine Tremplow County libraries. We have been in this room in years past where every single chair has been full of, of library supporters. We've asked them to stand. You've been able to see what that support looks like. This year, County Clerk Paul Severson has received numerous letters, either asking the board to continue reimbursing your nine county libraries at 100% or thanking you for doing that in the past, and I'm sure they also think they want you to continue to, to do it. From those letters, Nicole from Amanda spoke about the importance of free and reliable internet access at her public library. Charlotte from Arcadia shares how she values the help at her public library in completing job applications and writing resumes. Molly, a teacher and a library patron in Galesville, shares how over 83% of the sixth graders at the G E T Middle School have a library card and utilize our digital library to read their electronic books and listen to electronic audiobooks on their school-issued iPads. The Executive Finance Committee has passed this resolution, and I ask that the full board pass this resolution that's in front of you to reimburse libraries at 100% for services already provided to your taxpayers who utilize our services at the county's public libraries. Questions for me?
Any questions for Jessica?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
You go first.
I, I was just going to ask, if we don't approve this and keep it where it's at, what is the impact? Are you going to have to make cuts or?
Yeah, we will have to, probably the first thing that we'll do, although most of our budgets are already complete for 2023 in terms of what the municipality is going to give us for tax appropriation, so that means we would have to, yes, probably make some cuts. Then the next year, we would have to go to the municipality and ask them to try to make up the difference, putting a much bigger burden on our municipalities.
Just for information, the budget, so, it does have 100% in their budget.
Correct.
So that's already been discussed?
It's already in there, so it wouldn't be in addition to what's in the figures we have.
Yeah, that's correct.
The last several years have been at 100%.
The past five years.
Yeah, no, the, the state requires it to be at 70%.
The minimum.
I think what we should, we should state is, Paul, what's the difference between the 70 and 100%?
I knew you were going to ask that. Did you write that down? I gave him the number.
I think it's like $170,000.
I was going to say 140.
Or 140, 147.
Divided amongst the nine libraries.
What would be the difference?
Then that's split up amongst, basically amongst the nine libraries.
Amongst the nine, and are they split, is it split out by capita or evenly split?
It is through a.
By usage.
Go ahead.
Yeah, by usage, yep. So Paul, do they have the, the chart that is sent to you from Kristen at the Winding Rivers Library System?
No, no.
Okay.
Another thing that should be noted, that a good share of that budget goes to like Davy's Library. Anyone from county uses Davy's Library, do you know, because the county pays for it. It goes, it's charged back to us, and those figures are still staying at the 70%.
What, what did you just say?
The Eau Claire, adjacent, adjacent counties.
Ellie Phillips Library in Eau Claire.
Yeah. I'm thinking Davy's, that's what our library was, remember Paul?
I thought you were talking about the university.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it is at the university.
It is at the university.
Eau Claire. The Ellie Phillips Library sends us a bill every year.
I thought you were talking about the university.
Yeah.
Well, it is at the university.
It is at the university.
Eau Claire. The Ellie Phillips Library sends us a bill every year, and that's at the 70%, because they don't, aren't in the county.
So the resolution is specifically for in-county, your nine in-county libraries, to be reimbursed at 100%, not the minimum of 70%. And this is a resolution that has been passed over the last five years. The way that it's figured out, to answer your question, is it's a formula. So each library has total circulations back from 2021, and our totaling operating budget. Those two are divided, and it creates a unit cost. So that's our unit cost per circulation for non-residents. Then we have our non-resident circulation. We keep all that information separate: our total circulation, our non-resident circulation. That unit cost is multiplied by those non-resident circulation numbers to come to an amount. And each library is different, because each library has a different non-resident circulation. Each library will have a different unit cost, because their total circulation is different and their total operating budget is different. And so that's why I gave you the example of my library, so you could see what my total revenue is, to kind of give you an idea.
Yes, go ahead.
I have to just make a brief statement in support of 100% funding from the county level. We heard the DA talk earlier. We heard the sheriff talk earlier. All of these things are connected. Investment in county libraries is an investment in the future for the people that live in this county. I've heard time and time again how print is dead, how libraries are no longer necessary because we have the internet. All you have to do is hang out at a library to see how important the library is. You see individuals there who either don't have internet connections, can't afford a computer...
Don't know how to use it.
Don't know how to use it. You have a place where kids can gather, although some of the patrons don't like the kids gathering at the library. I think it's a great place for a kid to go, you know, rather than hanging out on the corner. The 100% investment in the libraries helps reduce the numbers that the DA was talking about and the sheriff was talking about. You might not see it quickly, but over time, this is an excellent investment for our future.
And Dan, if I could just kind of go off what you said, our non-resident circulation, since we just want to talk about those numbers, since those are what you're reimbursing us for, in using 2021's numbers, 57,494 items were circulated just from non-residents. That's an increase of 13% from last year's report. Last year was 49,859 circulations to non-residents. And these are physical items that they're taking home. And I know that if you haven't been to a library, I understand you might not know the things that are happening there. You might have an idea in your mind of what a library is like from your childhood. But I would encourage you to come and visit, because things are different. They still have all those great things from your childhood, but please know that we are utilizing our space in ways that serve our public. The A D R C comes to the Tremblow Library and meets for support groups right here from the county in our library space. Our space is very important. We are circulating items like metal detectors. We're circulating hotspots for those individuals who don't have internet access, reliable internet access at their home. We have databases that you can use your library card. A brand new one that we just purchased is Brainfuse. It gives live online tutoring to kids. It gives live online VA benefits for veterans to help them figure out that process. It gives live online job coaching for those that are searching for jobs. So there's a lot more going on than you might remember from your past, if you haven't been visiting lately. Yes.
That's right.
I would just echo what Supervisor Shreiner has said and what you said. The library has become, I know I've talked to Amanda a lot in Whitehall, it's become a place where people, homeless people, come in looking for support and help, you know. And the Eau Claire County Library actually, or the library in Eau Claire has a social worker...
Yes.
...assigned to their library. And I talked to Amanda about the possibility of her getting a social work intern in her library to do an internship, which I would gladly supervise and support through UW-Eau Claire, if that's something she wants to do. But our libraries have become way, they're sort of like what teachers are now. They meet a lot of needs for people in the community, and it's very, I will support this 100%.
Absolutely.
Can I jump in right now? I just had Stacy bring down my budget folder. And what's going around is actually that front page is what makes up that $527,000 for the library aid. It'll show by library, and it'll also on there show what the per-unit cost per item for each library. They don't have the same sum. I think whereas up to 11 and some as far down as $4.
Yep.
$4. So there's a, but that shows the 100% at, for the county libraries, and the 70% for those three libraries: Augusta, Eltuna, and Ellie Phillips. So that'll be coming around backwards.
Hey, any other questions?
I just wanted to add, I know as far as the library in Tremblow, and I've heard lots of other good things around the other county libraries as well, but besides just the budget that the libraries are requesting from the county, many of these libraries have friends of the library organizations that fundraise. And they work really hard to fundraise the monies in addition to and enhance the programming that we're already funding. It's busy all the time. Did you just finish winter coat boots donations for children in schools? I know the last couple of years, the kids could come there and get lunch on summer break. So very much in support of the libraries. Thank you.
Isn't that funded through something else, though?
Yeah, we didn't, none of our dollars went towards that. And none of our dollars, like when we have fundraisers, like for the friends, that does not go to our operating budget. We use that for extra. So, oh gosh, we want to bring in, you know, some presenter that we couldn't afford in our budget, we'll use the money for that. Yeah. But it doesn't go towards our operating.
Ms. Turner.
Supervisor Turner, I'm glad you brought up the fundraiser, because our library in Strum collects cans. I mean, that's really, in some ways, it's like we're collecting cans. But I mean, that's what, that's one of the, that's one of their main fundraisers.
Every little helps.
Is aluminum cans, you know, and there's a big sign on how we're trying to get to $100,000 by...
Sure. Every bit helps.
Jessica?
Yes.
Could you give, earlier you stated some of the things that you charge fees for.
Yeah.
Could you kind of give a breakdown, a better breakdown?
Sure.
Because I don't think we all understand.
Yeah.
We're looking at the budget in the budget committees. We're just seeing the bigger numbers. We're not seeing some of those finite...
Sure.
So what percent of your dollars come from fees?
Very little. Yep. And let me just, yeah.
Speak to that.
Yeah. So fees, at the Tremblow Public Library, and again, I can't tell you what every single library in the county is doing, but at the Tremblow Library, we only charge for replacement cost. So if you lose an item, or your dog eats it, I'm going to charge you what it's worth. Fees are always a suggested donation for not a replacement cost item. So if you come into my library and you need to fax an item, I'm going to let you know that the suggested donation is $1.50. That recoups our costs. If somebody cannot afford $1.50 for their faxing item, their faxing item can go through with 25 cents. So it's a very small amount: fees, fines, replacement costs. Like I said, that's in with my donation section of my revenue, and that is made up about 7% of my budget. And the majority of that certainly is donation, not fines and fees.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
We've only got like a minute here before we've got a break for the reading of the budget. So any more questions for Jessica?
I'd like to move that we accept this resolution.
I haven't read it yet.
Okay, go ahead. I read it.
We made the motion, and I'll second it for when you get to it.
We'll actually do that after the budget reading, so.
I know.
So anyway, thank you very much, Jessica. Appreciate it.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to our county.
I would like to add one thing. I've gotten more comments on the people requesting 100% than ever since this advert. They thought we were doing it already, I mean, already this year. And I said, well, it ain't passed yet, so they're expecting us to support it at 100%. So anyway, with that, we'll open the budget hearing, the first reading. Go ahead, Paul.
Be patient. The fastest I've read this is 29 minutes, so.
Go for the record.
I'm go, yeah, I'll shoot for 28. I always got to have a swing first.
Once he starts.
Go ahead, yeah, because I'm going to be reading.
It's for 29 minutes.
This is basically...
You've got a half hour.
This is basically it's to the public, but go ahead, start reading.
Okay, this is the proposed 2023 budget. I'll be reading the department or the account, and I'll read the last three columns, which is the budget request, anticipated revenues, and the levy. County Board, budget $101,412.99. Zero revenues, levy is the same amount. 800 telephone number, budget $200, revenue zero, levy $200. Circuit Court, budget $169,146.52. Revenues $469,710. Law Library, budget $14,914.8. Revenue $7,800. Levy $7,114.8. Coroner, budget $130,708.92. Revenues $15,500. Levy $115,208.92. District Attorney, budget $360,444.28. Revenues $48,572.95. Levy $311,871.33. Corporation Counsel, budget $282,620.23. Revenues $3,000. Levy $279,620.23. Special Accounting, budget $85,000. Zero levies. Levy $85,000. Indirect Cost Study, budget $4,625. Revenue zero. Levy $4,625. County Clerk, budget $325,621.87. Revenues $3,200. Levy $322,421.87. Human Resources, budget $312,795.81. Zero levies, so the, zero revenues, levy is the same amount then. EAP Program, budget $9,500. Zero levies. Levy, zero revenues, levy $9,500. Elections, $42,300. Zero levies. Zero revenues. I keep the, so levy is $42,300. Information Systems, budget $958,428.34. Revenues $1,000. Levy $957,428.34. Treasurer, budget $202,561.13. Revenues $5,000. Levy $197,561.13. Courthouse, budget $678,781.76. Zero levies. Zero revenues, then the levy is the same as the budget. The property projection project initiations is 000. Jail repairs is 000. Security screening, budget $216,052.91. No revenues. Levy is the same. Rizzo, budget $700. Revenue $700. Levy zero. Property liability insurance, $489,137. Revenues $288,737.58. Levy $200,399.42. Workman's compensation, budget $425,520. Revenues $319,140. Levy $106,380. Accrued liability work comp is 000. Unemployment compensation, budget $53,258.97. Revenues in the same amount, so the levy is zero. Health insurance deductible, budget $103,532. No revenues, so levy is the same as the budget. Registered deeds, budget $258,902.21. Revenues $258,902.21. Levy is zero. Land Records Administration, budget $278,70.51. Revenues $11,150. Levy $266,920.51. Public, our Land Records Public Access, budget is $134,270.21. Revenues in the same amount, and the levy is zero. Land Records retained fees, budget $199,316.10. Revenues in the same amount. Levy is zero. Land Records WLIP grant, budget $339,387. Revenues in the same amount. Levy is zero. Tax deeds, budget $6,000. Revenue zero. Levy $6,000. County Sheriff, uncollected property taxes, budget $500. Revenue zero. Levy $500. Sheriff's Administration, budget $3,624,993.66. Revenues $103,000. Dare K9 Program, budget $15,572.50. Revenues in the same amount. The levy is zero. Sheriff's Vehicle Capital Outlay, budget $140,000. Revenues, same amount. Levy is zero. Scape, budget is $59,118. Revenues in the same amount. The levy is zero. Dispatch, budget $967,160.29. Revenues $62,866. Levy $904,294.29. Support Services, budget $90,898.65. Zero revenues, so the levy is $90,898.65. Highway Safety, budget $665. Revenue zero. Levy $665. Jail Administration, budget $2279,787.18. Revenues $164,800. Child Support, budget $624,247.93. Revenues $548,664.83. Levy is $75,583.10. The MCO Payment is, budget is $342,241.83. Revenues are zero. Levy $342,241.83. Veterans Relief, budget $3,500. Zero levies. Zero revenues. Levy $3,500. Veterans Transportation, budget $23,775. Revenues $8,500. Levy $15,275. Veterans Service Office, budget $157,244.22. Revenues $11,000. Levy $146,244.22. Care of Veterans Graves, budget $6,000. Revenue zero. Levy $6,000. Libraries, budget $538,210.51. Revenue zero. Levy $538,210.51. Parks and Parks Commission, budget $90,375.56. Parks and Parks Commission, budget $90,375.56, revenues $24,100, levy $66,276.56. Patriot Park Improvement is 000, Patriot Park Shelter is 000. Economic Development, budget $100,810.64, zero revenues, levy $100,810.64. Wisconsin Travel Grant is 000. Snowmobile Trails, budget $70,470, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. County Fair, budget is $24,000, revenue zero, levy $24,000. Digital Media, budget $212,381.85, revenues $8,300, levy $204,081.85. Digital Media Voluntary Gifts, budget $10,000, revenues $10,000, levy is zero. Summer Work Experience is 000. University Extension, $217,740.6, revenues $3,884, levy $213,856.6. Water Quality Education Fund, budget $17,638.45, revenues $13,638.45, levy $4,000. PAT and Educational, budget $8,000, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Juntos, that's Spanish 4-H, by the way, budget request is $1,250, revenues $1,250, levy is zero. Youth Education, budget $1,800, revenues zero, levy $1,800. Nonmetallic Mining Reclamation, budget $7,500, revenues $7,500, levy zero. DLM Cost Share, budget $80,000, revenue zero, levy $80,000. LCC Miscellaneous Expenses is 000. Department of Land Management, budget is $867,85.26, revenues $388,308.8, levy $478,777.18. Lake Protection and Monitoring, budget $11,148.96, revenues in the same amount, and the levy is zero. Multi-Discharge Variance is 000. Fish and Game, budget $3,942, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Regional Planning Commission, budget $12,277, revenues zero, levy $12,277. DLM Vehicles, budget $37,000, revenues the same, levy is zero. Building Inspection, budget is $50,000, revenues $50,000, levy is zero. Planning, budget $41,900, revenues $36,900, levy $5,000. Wisconsin Fund Septic Systems, budget $25,000, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. And CapEx Expenditures is 000, Solid Waste is 000. Miscellaneous Expenses, budget $10,000, revenues $10,000, levy is zero. Contingency Fund, budget $175,631.72, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Offsetting Revenue Accounts, Tax Exempt Computers is a minus $27,383.35, Managed Forest Law, a minus $93,820. County Sales Tax, a minus $2.3 million, interest on taxes, a minus $150,000. Federal Aid in Lieu of Tax is a minus $19,000. Shared Taxes from the State, budget is $1,744,243.23, interest on temporary investments is a 200, a minus $200,000. Personal Property Tax Aid is a minus $40,621.85. Sale of Tax Deed Properties is zero. General Fund Applied is a minus $321,490.11. Going on to Public Health, budget $445,898.34, revenues $44,400, levy $401,498.34. Bioterrorism, budget $31,94, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. School-Based Sealant Program is 000. Public Health Epidemic is 000. TB Dispensary, budget $2512.25, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. WIC Program, budget $239,404.83, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Tobacco Control, budget $1,065.88, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Public Health Workforce Grant, budget $71,400, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Great River United Way, budget $10,000, revenues the same amount, levy is zero. Radon, budget $500, revenues the same amount, levy is zero. Qualitative Data, budget $35,000, revenues the same amount, levy is zero. Environmental Health is 000. WIC Farmers Market, budget $4,137, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. TNC Well Water, budget $10,000, revenues $10,000, levy is zero. Fit Family and SNAP, budget $17,288, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Agent Status, budget $85,000, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Car Seat Program, budget $2,000, revenues $2,000, levy zero. WIC Breastfeeding, budget $10,000, revenues $10,000, levy zero. La Crosse Water Grant, budget $2,998.92, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Communicable Disease, budget $3,798.66, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. MCH Grant, budget $18,402, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Prevention, budget $5,303, revenue same amount, levy is zero. MCH Match, budget $13,798.93, revenue zero, levy $13,798.93. Immunizations, budget $10,694.49, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Childhood Lead Program, budget $4,620, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Going to Human Services, Economic Support, budget $696,267.37, revenues $516,136.69, levy $180,130.68. Long-Term Support, budget $203,264.96, revenues $182,918, levy $20,346.96. Low-Income Energy Assistance is 000. Child Care Program, budget $13,504, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Aging and Disability Resource Center, budget $576,13.69, revenues $525,704, levy $50,309.69. Justice Sanctions is 000. Emergency Direct Services is 000. Administration, $690,410.32, revenues $468,404, levy $222,632. Family and Children's Services, budget $1,921,336.80, revenues $953,813, levy $967,523.80. Human Services Vehicles is 000. Behavioral Health, budget $1,771,984.20, revenues $1,509,841, levy $262,143.20. Children with Special Needs, budget $3,206,92.10, revenues $2,968,999, levy $237,93.10. Going on to Senior Services, Benefit Specialist, budget $89,667.74, revenues $54,11.28, levy Supported Employment Transportation is 000. 3D Preventive Health, budget $2,998, revenues $2,766, levy $232. 3B Administration, budget $34,485, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. 8521 Specialized Transportation, budget $100,856.20, revenues $84,613.50, levy $16,242.70. Their Non-Lapsing Fund is 000. 3E National Family Caregiver, budget $14,542, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. C1 Congregate Nutrition, budget $160,334.1, revenues $142,815.86, levy $17,518.15. C2 Home Delivered Meals, budget $322,934.94, revenues $260,899, levy $62,35.94. Volunteer Driver Program, budget $87,056.78, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Home Delivered Meal Donations is 000. Senior Services Donations is 000. Jail Assessment, budget $102,77.79, revenues the same amount, levy is zero. Wildlife Damage, budget $26,395.31, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Nutrient Management, budget $20,000, revenues the same, levy is zero. TRM Cost Share, budget $218,750, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. LWRM Cost Share, budget is $223,024, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Notice of Discharge Grant, budget $532,973.98, revenues in the same amount, levy zero. Going to our Debt Service, Principal, budget $3,418,000, no revenues, levy $3,418,000. Bond Expense, budget $3,325, revenue zero, levy $3,325. Interest, budget $1,406,825.79, revenues $1,69,500, levy $337,325.79. Under the Capital Projects, all budgets are zero, so there's no levy there. Healthcare Center, budget $25,867.64, revenues in the same amount, the levy is zero. Dog License Damage Expense, $12,000, revenues $12,000, levy zero. Going to the Highway Department, Administration, budget $464,370.29, revenues $209,000, levy Supervision, $119,537.55, revenues $87,000, levy $32,537.55. Radio Expense, budget $22,500, revenues $2300, levy $20,200. GPL Insurance, budget $35,000, revenues $21,679.45, levy $13,320.55. Highway Fringe Benefits, $1.8 million, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Operation of Shop is 000. Handling, Fuel Handling Cost Pool is 000. Operation of Equipment, budget $2,523,661.68, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. By-Tumulus Operation, budget $3,175,468, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Buildings and Ground Operation is 000. Acquisition Cost Pool is 000. Maintenance, $1,649,734, revenues $1,149,734, levy $500,000. Winter Maintenance, budget $600,000, revenue zero, levy $600,000. County Aid Road Construction on County Trunks, budget $3,826,000, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. Bridge Construction on County Trunk Highway System, budget $200,000, revenues $200,000, levy zero. State Highway Maintenance, budget $1,950,900, revenues in the same amount, levy is zero. PBM Projects, budget 000. Town, City, and Villages Maintenance, budget $1,150,000, revenues the same, levy is zero. Road Construction, County Aid Road Construction on Local Roads, budget $1 million, revenues $600,000, levy $400,000. County Aid Bridge Local, budget $177,273.54, revenue zero, levy $177,273.54. Local Department Road Maintenance is 000. Miscellaneous Maintenance, budget $500,000, revenues same, levy zero. Grand Total, budget $79,116,233.9, revenue $61,893,67.9, proposed tax levy is $17,223,166. 28. Huh?
It was less than you get to start till 11:03, so it's only 25.
Oh, she said I didn't start till 11:03, so. No, now we, now we go on to Resolutions. And you leave the budget hearing open.
Okay. Budget Hearing's still open, we'll go on to Item 6A, Executive Finance Committee Reimbursement for Tremplaw County Libraries at 100%.
Oh, I don't have. Whereas, whereas Tremplaw County has nine in-county libraries located in the cities of Arcadia, Blair, Galesville, Independence, Osseo, and Wyattal, and the villages of Ettrick, Strum, and Tremplaw. Whereas several years ago, the state of Wisconsin passed legislation for counties to financially support local libraries for circulation for non-resident borrowers, which include our local in-county libraries and adjacent out-of-county libraries. Whereas the county is mandated to reimburse those libraries at a minimum 70% reimbursement rate for Tremplaw County residents that are considered non-resident borrowers. And whereas the levy requires for libraries to only calculate on non-resident usage. And whereas the levy for libraries falls under the, outside the levy limit requirement, so does not affect county funding for operations. And whereas librarians from City of Arcadia, Jenny Lesinski, City of Blair, Chris McNamara, City of Galesville, Laura Oynus. City of Galesville, Laura Oynus; City of Independence, Kayla Matson; City of Osseo, Gina Waters; City of Whitehall, Amanda Hegi; and the villages of Etrick, Carla Dunham; Village of Strum, Dawn Herring; and Village of Tremplow, Jessica Shonofor, have requested support at a higher reimbursement level for their libraries. Whereas the Executive and Finance Committee has reviewed the request and recommends supporting the nine libraries at a hundred percent reimbursement level for 2023. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors approves supporting the cities of Arcadia, Blair, Galesville, Independence, Osseo, Whitehall, and villages of Etrick, Strum, and Tremplow at an hundred percent reimbursement rate for non-resident circulation in 2023. Introduced by Executive Finance Committee, Riley Foltz, Richard Sashia, John Austin, Dave Larson.
And I'll second.
Most by Senator, second by Mr. Mark. Any discussion?
Are those things still going around?
I just had one other quick question. Do you have an approximate? I'll let her get up there. Do you have an approximate average as to what you're able to raise fundraisings per year?
For my library?
Has it gone up yearly? Has it stayed the same, gone down?
So I could only speak for my library. My library does one fundraiser, we do the Taste of Tremplow, the Friends put that on. And I believe last year it was six thousand dollars that was raised after expenses. And we use that a lot for summer programming. At my library, I have a youth programming budget that's about two thousand dollars. That doesn't really get me far enough, and so that's why the Friends sponsor that.
And then, do you have to present your budget to the county board here, or where's the accountability?
We have our own board. Each library has a library board that's made up of trustees from within the village and surrounding townships. And all of Chapter Forty-three in state statutes are all about libraries and the way libraries have to be run and kept accountable. So, yes.
Okay.
It's well-covered. Good questions, yes.
You say you still have to go to your village board, don't you?
So the village board doesn't have to approve my budget. They approve the tax appropriation. We keep very close relationships with our village because they are very important to us for that tax appropriation, yes.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. So this came up in the budget meetings, and it is in the budget. It's paid, it's in the levy, so we've already accounted for in the levy. Just for some numbers for everybody. Of the top five general fund levy accounts, the library would be number five, at five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that's kind of where it lies. If we have to look for places to pull money from, obviously, that one is one that we can control. It's in the budget right now at a hundred percent. Seems like we can afford it with where we're at with the levy. But just on record, we got to keep our costs down, and we have to do the best we can to support it. We have to do it at a seventy percent level per state law. So there is some money that we could have taken out. The committee chose not to. So that's just where it lies. I just want to make sure I put that out there, so.
Could you speak to thirty percent of the levy proposed? Because that would be what we could reduce that, the maximum we could reduce that line.
Correct, the five hundred and some thousand.
It would be about two hundred thousand.
And not the full line item, though.
No.
The maximum that you could reduce is the in-county, which is four hundred and ninety-five, sixty-five. That's the only one that you could reduce.
The actual figure would be something like a hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine.
What we're supporting is the out-of-county circulations, right, is what this goes to.
Out of residents.
In-county. These are all your taxpayers.
Out of municipality, like, so Galesville can go to Tremplow or that type of thing.
So like, the town of Unity where I live, I can go to Strum.
Right. I live in the town of Caledonia. That means I don't pay municipal tax for the library to the village of Tremplow, where the library resides. And so my usage gets reimbursed from the county. And that's the same for anybody else that is a Tremplow County resident but does not live in a municipality with a library or a township, or they don't have a library. So they don't pay library tax, so that needs to be reimbursed by the county.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It's my opinion that if we need to reduce the budget, there are other areas in this budget that would have less of a negative effect than taking money out of this line item.
That's correct.
I don't know if it was clear.
Maybe there's too many.
Yeah, there are too many people on the phone.
There we go. As in the past, I think it's, if you pay taxes into a library, be it Blair, Whitehall, whatever, that covers you anywhere in the county. If you don't pay into it, if you're in a township that doesn't, isn't contributing towards the library, that is where this money comes in.
Absolutely.
So I think that's the key thing here. So, again, if you live in Tremplow, you go to Whitehall, there's no fee transfer.
Correct.
That's covered.
Correct. And the same service is being offered to somebody that lives in a township that doesn't have a library as a village resident. And so while I'm happy that state statutes have a minimum of seventy percent, those that are using our services that don't pay a library tax are not paying their fair share if the county reimburses us only seventy percent. And that's where that analogy comes in. You're going to get a ten-dollar item from the library, just like you're going to get a ten-dollar item from Walmart. And at Walmart, are you going to say, "I only want to give you seven dollars for it"?
Yeah, it's a great analogy, if you use the library.
Absolutely, and this is based on actual usage.
Just want to make sure that was clear. It's good.
Okay, any other comments?
I just want to make a comment. I'm in support of the library. I just know that we've got huge budget issues overall countywide. So that's why we're just kind of, I think several of us here are kind of just trying to scrutinize how we can stretch those county dollars so that other projects don't end up taking up a lot, too.
And I understand that, but I would encourage you to listen to the taxpayers who speak very strongly about library supports.
Paul's got one more comment.
And just one comment is that libraries are not part of our levy limit. We have our levy limit, but we can do library aid in addition to that.
It is exempt from the levy limit.
We are at our levy limit on the budget that I just read. So libraries are added on to that. Same with county aid.
Bridges, bridges and libraries.
Bridges and libraries, yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Mark.
This will be my final say on this, but since we have such horrible broadband in this county, libraries have become, libraries have become the place for people to go, especially students who don't have internet service at home.
Absolutely.
To be able to do their homework, you know, everybody gets a computer, but not everybody gets an internet connection. So the libraries are a major resource for our students and older people who struggle with technology and, you know.
Yep, we're very hands-on at the library in that regard.
You are like a godsend to many people until we get broadband, you know.
Okay. I've heard the motion, discussion. Call a roll.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sashia.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Sixteen to zero.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up. Good job. Audit Committee?
Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Austin, one thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Kevin Adams, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Robert Becker, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Heather Fritsch, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Ron Johnson, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Stacy Klein, four hundred and twenty dollars. David Larson, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Dick Miller, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Kellen Nelson, one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Jeanne Nutter, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. David Orsh, zero. Richard Sashia, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Dan Schreiner, five hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents. Lori Severson, a hundred and thirty dollars. Andy Todd, a hundred and seventy dollars. Bridget Turner, six hundred and forty dollars. Grand Total Per diems, four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Grand Total Expenses, one thousand, five hundred and two dollars and nineteen cents. Grand Total, five, or six thousand, three hundred and two dollars and nineteen cents. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown. Introduced by Audit Committee, John Austin, David Larson, Jeanne Nutter.
I'll second.
Most by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Nutter. Any discussion? Not? Call a roll.
We'll call you. We'll go.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes, sir.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sashia.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yeah.
Sixteen to zero.
Okay, Item Seven, Announcement Appointments. I would like to confirm committee assignments I made with Dawn coming in. She's assuming the committees that Riley was on, with the exception of Exec Finance. In Exec Finance, I appointed Bridget Turner. So I'm looking for approval for those appointments.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Most made and seconded. Is any other discussion? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carey.
Opposed.
There's a, yeah, opposed. Was there any opposed?
Just to be safe.
I guess it was, Carey.
Paul, are you going to update the committee sheet?
It's coming around.
Yeah. Oh, I was just going to say.
Okay, Appointment to the Housing Authority Board. And I think we have a letter for.
Yes.
Okay.
Dear Chair, Austin, the Housing Authority of Tremplow County is requesting reappointment of Scott Brown of the Pigeon Falls to the Housing Authority of Tremplow County Board of Directors. Mr. Brown's term expires twelve thirty-one, twenty-two. Mr. Brown's knowledge, past experience, and involvement in the community is a tremendous benefit to our agency. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Francis Menka, Executive Director, Housing Authority of Tremplow County.
Most approved.
Most by Ms. Nutter. Seconded by Ms. Turner. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Appointment to the ADRC Advisory Council. You have a letter for that?
To John Austin, County Board Chair. I am writing to ask that Lois Taylor be appointed by you as County Board Chair and request confirmation by the County Board as a new member of the ADRC Advisory Council to fill a vacancy. Her name was approved by the Human Services Board on Monday, October seventeenth, 2022, and is being forwarded for your consideration. We have another vacancy on the ADRC Advisory Council. We'll be bringing another name to you next month. Thank you. And it's from Deb Sukla.
For the one, the ADRC recommendation for next month, Heather and I do know her, so it'll be coming up.
Well, we'll have that next month, yeah.
I know the name, so.
Most by Ms. Turner to approve, and seconded by Ms. Nutter. Any discussion on that appointment? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, this is something that just came out here like a miracle. We've had it in the past, and I just figured it had enough to do already. So I'm actually looking for somebody to serve as a Wisconsin County, they call it a CAP Advisor, County Advisory Program. You'll meet in Madison. That's probably two, four times a year.
I think it's in, did I put it in your packets?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. The CAP team, yes.
Looking for a volunteer to do it? And Stacy would do it? All right.
There we got that.
Well, you got that one taken care of. And that's great. It's very educational. You'll go down, you'll talk to your, and now you'll be able to put in the actual app because you know who your representative is going to be. So we didn't want to do it until the election was over. So, anyway, that takes care of that. Thank you very much. Committee reports?
They're all either in their packet, the general fund balance, the sales tax update, and the monthly expense report. They're all there. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, you want to do the ten, or you want to go to the budget?
I would go to the budget. We can be done by noon.
All right, that's good. Is there a motion to approve the budget, as was read by Paul?
I'd make the motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the budget?
I'll second.
And dispense with reading it again.
And you do need to read it again.
Thank you.
And that was the second by Ms. Turner? Okay. I'm sure there's going to be some discussion on the budget. We have a motion and a second to approve it as is, so we can discuss it now.
Yes.
Any discussion at all?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There are a couple adjustments need to be made. One, let's see if I can get the right line. It had to do with highway, the co-aid bridges. The number in the budget is an incorrect number. So I'm making a motion that that number of one seventy-seven, two seventy-three, fifty-four gets changed to one hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three cents, sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. It was an adding error that we caught after the budget was put together.
Actually, what it was, was you passed the resolution from County Highway Committee that was a different number than what was given to us previously. So that's, so we have to go with what the resolution that you passed last month was.
So that should be the one eighty?
It should be one eighty, eight sixty-three, seventy-one.
Yeah. So that means thirty-five hundred and ninety dollars and seventeen cents has to, more has to come out of the general fund in the budgeting process. And there's one more item. Let's see if I can find it here. Under the family relief, whatever it was. Two.
Two, page two. Could you put it back up, maybe?
It's MCO of Payment Expenses listed in there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
After we did the budget, they changed their billing process. We're being, have to pay for fourteen months' worth because the state decided they're changing the twelve-month cycle to two months more. So we have to pay fourteen months this year instead of twelve. So that number has to be increased by fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-seven cents to a total of four oh two, seven eight, two point five seven. And then that number also has to be added, or subtracted, out of the general fund. If I find it here.
She's looking for it. We're going to screen it, yeah.
There it is.
There you go.
So.
Page seven?
Are you finding it, or it's the one oh one point four eight, three oh five? No, it is, not that one. The general fund applied, yes.
Oh, you were on the right one.
Yeah, no, I changed it.
Page four?
That one's changed, okay.
She's on the MCO, which you just talked about.
We're going to catch up to you, Dave, in just a second. She's going to change the one on page seven.
Okay.
Down there towards the bottom. Line twenty-two.
Oops.
Yep. Okay.
Next?
Okay, the next one, okay.
It's the MCO one, which you had earlier.
Yep. We're caught up, now we're on.
Well, you've caught that up already.
Now you're going to change it to?
Page four. Right, yep, page four.
Page four, yes.
Now we're caught up to Dave.
And so therefore, that fifty-seven thousand more has to come out of the general fund to balance the budget. So.
So it's going to be this much, right?
So the number there is minus three twenty-one, four nine oh point eleven, has to become three eighty-two, six hundred and twenty point six five.
Six twenty point six five.
Yep.
Okay.
What a great bookkeeper you are.
Hey.
No.
No.
You got that done?
Yep.
Of course.
Now I want you to go page seven, because I want to make sure that the number at the end stays the same. We're 37 cents off. Oh. We're $3.
We're $3.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Did you put this one in?
Maybe not.
Go back to page two.
Page two is the MCO. That was 50. Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Why did the state decide that we had to pay 12 months and 14?
That should be in your, that should be in your packets too.
Maybe I need to read that, I'm sorry.
Because all the different counties didn't go in on the managed care program at the same time. So they were billing some on a calendar basis. Some were fiscal, so they were starting at maybe June, and went June to June. Now they're making it so that everything is on a calendar basis.
Everybody's doing this.
So if you, yeah, you should find this in your packet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah. So it just shows that the final invoice for Tremplaw County will receive covered February through January. Now they're making it January through January. So that's why we got an additional 14 months. And everything is going to now be.
It should be less next time.
April 1st to March 31st.
I'm sorry, I did not get that in my packet, which is why I didn't read it to exec.
Oh, it went to exec. Oh.
So I'm sorry.
Okay, that's my.
Now I have it, and I can look at it.
Anyway, this was a state mandated program, was funded at one time and no longer is, but it's still mandated.
Did you hit one of the numbers wrong?
Have we got some?
Hang on, I'm going to do this.
Something wrong with this figure?
I'm going to figure something fast here. 345, 242, 20, 57, 540, 37. Okay. And the other was 180. 180, 863, 71, 177. 273, 54. Minus 3590.
I packed a salad if you want some.
There's some chocolate kisses that we're going around.
Oh, yeah, they're by, they're by Dick, he's.
61, 130.
It started with Mr. Johnson.
490.
That's actually from rules.
How did you share her salad with us? Do you pass it around?
Someone else is in there. So I had to take that 50. 35.
It's still my big noon if you're here.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Do you consider what the total is and what our levy is?
And what was the difference on the other? 57. 540, 37. Plus 321.
So I really would like to know.
490, 11. This is the number that should be on page four.
But they're regulated by some of the laws?
General fund. That line right there. Should be 443, 751, 19. That is not the right. Now go to seven. Take that out again. Because, oh, you got it in the wrong column, maybe. Look on page, um, there should be nothing in the.
I gotta get this important.
I'm only adding 61,000, 130, 54 to. You got it for me, Dave? 22. I know, I said one thing and typed the right one.
Type the other, okay.
So. That should be 382, 620, 65.
How does that work? Or how that impacts their tax bill?
And you entered that.
And if they.
Now go to the last page. Let's go to, um.
It's going to come somehow.
No, make sure that this is the number at page one. Okay. Second page. That's where we changed the 342, 241. 83 plus 57, 540.
It's white chocolate.
37.
I don't like white chocolates. Sometimes.
No, there's something else in my machine.
That's probably why they're in there. Nobody wanted them. Cookies and cream.
342, 241, 83, 57, 540.
Here and there.
37.
Keep an eye on it, it's going to make noon.
That's the number that should be on page four. Well, unless my calculator is really messing things up here. 340.
Highway four, it's not in it.
No, it's not. No, not at 177, it's 180. So that is.
I mean, the borrowed money for highways is always in the budget.
Oh, yes. 342, 241.
Right, exactly.
83, 57, 540, 37. Let's add this again.
It's much harder to do it when you're under pressure.
Right, it is. Totally is. When everybody's hungry, you must do it. I'm just kidding.
The whole county, the whole county is watching, you know.
Oh, I found it, I found it. Good, 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 good. Now we're good. 241. No, it's 242. Yep, we're getting it. 402, 78. Yeah, we've got the, we have the pacifier out there right now. 402, 782, 57 plus minus this number.
I'm a typer. I can do statistics from kids' years.
This page I don't want. That's what's, I wonder how come? Look at that. This was supposed to be a five. Now we're. Yes, we're going to put it to four, we're going to put it to 402.
782, 57.
That is correct. Okay, now we are going to go to the highway.
Take 3,000 of the, of the total?
We haven't done that yet. Okay, here we're going to put in one on page.
Seven.
Seven. 180, 863, 71.
71?
Wasn't it?
How's it coming?
Coming good.
Slowly but sure.
863, 7. That says local.
Roger.
Okay. Oh, there we found the other one. Took the wrong line. Okay, put that in. Now go to the bottom. And what are we off?
3,000.
Exactly.
From that number? Where's your last page?
223, 162, 37 cents, too.
And it, that was.
Okay, so we're going to go back to page four now. Page four. 321, 490, 11. Okay. I'm not going to do this one. Where's that number coming? That's supposed to be subtracted. Dang, nab it. Let me try this again. 402, 782, 57. This is supposed to be five. This is supposed to be a five. As long as you got that number there, and then go back to the, um, we're, okay, go to seven. Bottom of seven. It's supposed to be. I didn't do the top part, so. 22616637? I think my calculator is messed up.
Yeah, what do you got going on there?
I know. There's, there's numbers that I don't even type in, and it's coming. I want you to, um. Okay, now go to page four. And change that 382 to 379. And the rest, and leave the rest. Now go to the last page. You went the wrong way.
Mrs. Kidd, embarrassing you.
Ooh, you just got to look.
What? Come on, here, come on, come on. Oh, we got to get this. The 4, the 402, 782, 57 is correct.
They said it was 405.
402. 402, 782, 57. That is correct. Now we'll go to the last page again. And it should be the 180, 863, 71. Correct. Now let's go to page four. We have to take more from the. Because now, when you went to page seven again, is there some? That has to be 223, 166. So take, go back up to the page four. And we're going to take, make that 370. 620.
We went 22, weren't we? We went down 3,000 and made it 3,000 even more.
Yeah, because we didn't have enough. That's why, that's why the levy went up, so. 82. Let's put the 382 back in there. And then, now we're at.
3,000.
Now you got to put two, three more thousand in to the live, into that one. So it's going to be 385. Enter and go to the bottom. Now we got that. Now we got to get rid of 37 cents. So we got to go back to four. Four. 65 is going to be.
37 cents.
37 and 65. It's going to be 102.
I thought you were trying to get rid of it, not add to it.
102. Enter. Yep. We got it. We got it.
Okay.
Okay. We got it. We, we will. Like, I just want to show you these numbers so that we, we go to page four first. And that is the managed care. No, page two. Page two. On, on page two, the managed care now is what the state wants it at, is the 402, 782, 57.
He's not listening.
And that, and that will.
We're backing up, yeah.
Okay, so, so it's highlighted on the screens to us, so you can see it. That is what the state is going to bill us in 2023. Okay? So we got that changed. And in 2024, they will be going back again to, to put in what we have been paying, which is 345, 242, 20. So we're good on that one. Now we're going to go to page seven. Which is in the county aid bridge. We changed it to what you passed the resolution at last month. And so that 180, 863, 71 is there. Now go to page four. And this is the change then in the general fund. They went from 321 to 385, 621, 02. And if, then if you go back to the last line on seven, our levy is still the same, because we can't go any more than that amount. That's our limit.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Paul, can you give us an idea of the balance in the unallocated portion of the general?
It's in your packets?
No, once this is, takes, takes place.
Well, it'll, it, this will technically not come out until after the first of the year, but, um.
Okay, well, no, I, I.
So you're at, what were we at? 3.8? 3 point, something like that. Here it is, here it is. I got it right here. 3,138,000 right now, which we will be taking 380, what, are you on that? Page four again. We'll be taking 385,621,02 away from the one, uh, 3.1 million.
After, yeah, 3.1, yeah.
I can do that if this calculator works again. Because I started typing numbers and different ones came out, so I'm starting to think I'm time for a new one.
Have you got a budget for a new one?
I'll have to go sh. Chris, is that basket empty yet? Because I'm taking donations for a new calculator. That. Minus 385, 621, 02. See? Look at that. Oops.
It went the wrong way.
It went the wrong way.
See, it's, it's time.
It's, it's my calculator, it's got to be. I think, it's making me nervous, is what it's doing. 385, 621, 02. It'll put it, it'll put it down to 2,752,931, 73. Okay. Boy.
I'm throwing that thing away.
Okay.
It's starting to even move.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Sure, this is where. The budget, the budget is still, the hearing is still open, by the way, yeah.
So on page, sheet five, on 202, Human Services at the bottom, there's children with special needs. My question is, we don't have any, did those monies have to become separated out from another account?
I'm glad Deb is here because this is a new program.
Yes.
It's a new, it's a new.
I just wanted to bring that.
Children with special needs, where we don't even, if you look over to the left, we don't even have an account number for it yet.
Count number, right.
Right, it's a brand-new program.
Well, not really.
Well, or it's separating something out.
In, well, I lose track of time. In, earlier this year, yes, earlier, late last year, early this year, the Human Services Department did a reorganization. It was, that's what was, is like in fall of last year. It was after the budget was all done for '22. So we are operating in the reorganized system using last year's budget. The proposed 2023 budget is to align the budgets with our reorganized units, so that So that way the supervisors have their budgets. It isn't new, it's just taking what we've had and reorganizing it. And so we used to have a justice unit, that we aren't having anymore. We took parts of that and we put it in the children families for youth justice, we put parts of that into behavioral health for adult drug court. And then in behavioral health, we had a lot of services for kids with disabilities, birth to three, CLTS, CCS. And we moved that out, so behavioral health now is just adult behavioral health. And then children with special needs is where that difference went to. So it's nothing new, it's just we reorganized our budget.
Is, Deb, is the previous year in the specific materials that you had sent us through human services budget? I'm just looking for last year's actual.
Uh, yes.
Or is that not?
No, that was, so what we did is when we did the budget proposal. We gave you the previous year in the place it had been budgeted in the previous year.
Okay.
So it looks like there was nothing ever budgeted before for, so if you look like at the justice unit. If you scroll up to the justice unit, which is 544 something. Yep, so if you look at that budget, you'll see that there was previous year money, but now there's no 2023 money. And if you look at the behavioral health line. You'll see that there's a substantial reduction. So we just moved things around. Okay.
What shows on your screen now is the 22 budget. And then the 22 levy and then the 23 budget shows on your screen now, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions at all? Yes.
Um, I'm just wondering where, cause there was no county fair revenue. Where does all, where do all the admission fees go at $5 a person and record breaking attendance?
I'll start to answer it and then I think maybe Kellen can answer the rest.
Okay, thanks.
The county, the county fair is not a county function. And the $24,000 that we have in the budget is Tremplacon's, the county's donation as a, a donation to the fair to run the fair. So, no. And if anybody's available Monday night, they're having their annual meeting upstairs in the Wisconsin room. Annual meeting is Monday night. So it's, it's not, it's not a county function. It's, it's a separate entity that runs the fair. The Tremplacon Ag Society, yeah.
I know there's a fair board, so that's why I was confused.
Yeah.
Is there something you wanted to add to that?
We've, we've had 24,000 for probably the last 15 years. It's been the exact same amount.
Paul, it's been, it's been longer than that.
It's maybe longer than 15 years.
It's been over 20 years.
Maybe 30 even, because I.
Kellen, is that, um, do all counties operate that way? Or are we just different?
No, there's a lot of different structures for county fairs to operate. Uh, some are run by county, some are not. Positives and negatives to each one and, yeah.
But how we do it has worked well?
Yeah, I mean.
I think so.
But I mean, we're, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization.
Any other questions, getting back to the budget, any other questions on the budget? We got a motion and a second to approve. You just wanna start calling the roll?
I can do that, if I get on the right page here. Yeah, and I'm so absent minded today. Left my, I left my water at home, get in the car, driving, and I said, oh, no. So then I got.
We have water here.
I know. I looked down and I have a bottle of water in the car. Come in the courthouse, I left it in the car.
So Chair, could I just make one more?
Yeah.
Statement, so. And everybody's had a chance to look at it, you know, the, the finance committee worked long and hard to try to make sure that we came to a budget that was reasonable. Wasn't a burden on the county any more than it had to be. And a lot of the directors, I, I've said, did a lot of work to try to meet that 1%, you know, guideline of reduction. That was tough.
That was tough.
No doubt, I was, it was tough to do, I was the one that brought that up and said, let's try to do that. And to all the directors who are listening or are here, thank you, cause it, it really did help us get to where we needed to be. That said, it's been said many times in these meetings before that we gotta watch out for what's coming, we have to have a plan. And if you'll notice, there's one line item there that we haven't talked about, is the debt service, right? It's 3.759 million. We've, we've said we're going to spend and we have to have that allocated, and it is allocated. It's 21.8% of our levy. Okay, put that, put that number in your head. Almost a quarter of what we're going to the county and asking for is to spend on debt service. Between now and April, I believe it is, we have to have a way to service that, okay? We have to figure out how we're gonna fund it. So there's gonna be a lot more discussion on how that, how that comes to be. If there's anybody that has any input, please let me know and the rest of us, David and the chairman there, will figure out how to do this and put, put a good proposal together. But we have a lot more work to do, especially with regard to things such as the highway, which if you'll notice, the highway is a special fund. And their budget is 1 point, you know, basically $2 million just to run the highway department, okay? So there's a lot more work to be done and I think we've gone, come a long ways and I'm proud of the people that worked on it with me and, and all of you. So just wanna make sure I, I called those things out.
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
And I also would like to specifically thank the exec finance committee for all the work that they've done. This is not an easy feat to take on and I fully respect that, so thank you.
I just happened to note, jumping the gun here, David made a amendment to the, to straighten out these numbers and I don't think we ever got a second to that.
I think there was a, I thought there was a second, but there was no vote.
We haven't voted on it either yet. So anyway. Who seconded it?
You and I.
No, that's, that's, that's.
That's a different one. But I don't think anybody.
But David's comments need seconded.
Yeah.
And I'll do that.
Oh, good.
Okay, motion.
Okay.
So now that is to pass the.
Amendment.
Amendment to the budget. With, you know, with this, I forgot what your figures were, you wanna repeat the figures?
Oh, God, no.
It's changing, it's changing to the co-aid bridges and changing to the MCO payment. And then affecting the general fund.
Okay. Call the roll on that.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
Don Waldera.
abstain, I don't feel like I know enough.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
15, oh, and one, good.
So now it's to pass the budget as amended.
Can I?
Great.
That's where we're at now.
Now, now, now it's to pass the budget as amended.
But I think, you had a question yet?
No, I don't have a question, I just wanna say that I, I know that the public doesn't have this and maybe they haven't seen it, but when you figure our budget request is almost $80 million. And our tax levy is 17 million, that, I mean, I think that's really amazing. And kudos to everybody who works so hard to manage their money. So, I mean, that's, that's astounding to me, anyway.
Do we need a motion to pass as amended?
No, we have, we have that, that motion and second is made. But I wanna make one more comment, if you're back on page six on your budgets. Under debt service. This is, this is a foretaste of what's coming. Okay, you will see on line 58211, interest. That there's a revenue there. When we borrowed the 43 million dollars, we actually got a premium and got 46 million dollars. But that extra 3 million, we have to use to offset interest. So on that issue, so that's what, this is the second year of it, we had it last year and now this, this is the second year of it. So we're dwindling down that 3 million dollars, but 1,069,5 is taken away from that premium money. When that's gone, we're gonna be looking back at what the budget request line is because there won't be any other revenues.
So you're saying we're gonna have to figure out how to cut another million dollars out of?
Well, it's, it's not in the levy, but we have to figure something out, yes.
One more year of this, yeah, right?
There's at least, at least one year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Back to the motion as amended. Call the roll?
As amended, okay. Oh, and look who's first this time, Don Waldera. You wanna, there you go, that's fine. Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severs, whoops, she's not here. Andy Todd. Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
15, oh, and one.
I think this is one of the earliest we've finished a budget.
This is like a miracle.
Anyway.
Not kidding.
I want to go to item 10. Make a motion, somebody makes a motion to instruct the clerk to pay mileage and per diem. Motion by Ms. Turner, second by Ms. Nutter. We'll call the roll.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
16 to zero.
I think it's record time for a budget meeting. So anyway, I wanna thank everybody for moving this along and we can adjourn at 12:20.
Okay, pound.